The City by Sandy City Council Meeting of Tuesday, April 16th. The order, if we could all stand for pleasure allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All council members aren't present. We have any addenda modifications?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do not have an addendum, but I do have a clarification type typo in the K2 of consent agenda. There was an incorrect number listed on the agenda. The correct payout is thirteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars and one cent. It is correct in the AP batch, but that number on the agenda was incorrect, so I wanted to get that corrected.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Lundin to accept the agenda as stated, and a second by Councilman Carlson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Five oh vote. Motion carries. No proclamation, accommodation, or certified awards. Therefore, we move on to the approval of city council meetings from April 2nd, the regular meeting, and the economic development authority meeting. Any motions for that?
No.
I need a motion to approve it, but I don't really need to approve it.
I thought we had to.
Oh yeah, I need a motion to approve it.
Thank you. I have an approval by Councilman Lundin. And I have a second by Councilman Lawrence Allen. In favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, five oh. Announcements. Park and Recreation Culture Board, Tuesday, April 23rd at 6:00 PM. Good Governance Meeting, Tuesday, May 7th at 5:00 PM. A city council meeting, Tuesday, May 7th at 7:00 PM. And the EDA meeting immediately following the city council meeting. Council community reports.
Mayor, are you still going to bicycle?
I didn't go in your absence, sir.
Okay, because that was during my vacation, was it?
Yes, sir. And I went in your absence.
Okay. So am I going next one, or what's the plan?
If you wouldn't mind.
Sure.
Otherwise, I can continue to go for you, Councilman Brinkley.
What is the next date?
Ms. Wood?
I can email it to you. I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you.
Any others? All right, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for the Resolution 2019 adopting assessment for the 1990-91 Palomino Road Improvement. This would be handled by Attorney Clark Johnson.
Mr. Johnson, members of the city council, to give the council a little background on this matter. This involves assessments for improvements that occurred back in 1990-91. It was originally assessed by the council for street construction, concrete, curb and gutter, sewer services, sanitary services and water main, and water services with regard to the property in question, which is the Heeman property located at the address set forth in the resolution. The specifics of the assessment, which was in the total amount of ten thousand, seven dollars and twenty-three cents, and which was deferred because at the time, the property was not located within the city limits of the city of Isanty. And resolution that was adopted back in 1991 specified that those assessments would be deferred until such times of property became annexed to the city, which occurred on January 1st of 2019. The matter was brought before the council earlier at the March 5th meeting, excuse me, at the February 19th meeting. And at that time, we did not have the information regarding communications back at the time between the city administrator and Mr. Heeman whereby Mr. Heeman was given information by the city that there would be a hearing held prior to adoption of the assessment. Mr. Heeman provided that information at that meeting and at the March 5th meeting based on review of that correspondence and determination that it would be appropriate to grant a hearing in order to consider implementing these assessments since that had been represented at the time. The matter was noticed for the hearing in question. That hearing was set for this evening. The documentation that has been reviewed and set forth indicates that the assessments were based on the front footage of the property. The formula that was in place for levying the assessments on each of the benefited properties was followed. That information is set forth. And the assessment basis that was compiled at the time has been reviewed by our city engineer appears to be a reasonable determination of the appropriate amount of the assessment based upon the policies that were in place at that time. The original assessment was to be spread over 15 years. The current resolution before the council for consideration also would spread the assessment over 15 years. Interest would accrue beginning now, not relating back to 1991, so there's no penalty in that regard in the sense that the original amount of the assessment remains the same. Interest would accrue at the same rate that was applied at the time. As council may be aware, Mr. Heeman is opposed to the assessment, feels that it's not being properly levied, that in his opinion, the appropriate procedures were not followed. I have reviewed what was done based on the records from 1991, reviewed the notices that have been prepared for this hearing, and I believe that the city is within statutory authority to impose the assessment, if the council deems that appropriate. I'm sure Mr. Heeman is here and would like to address the council with regard to his objections, and I would note for the record that Mr. Heeman has delivered a letter noting his objections to the assessment dated today's date.
All right, with that being said, I'd like to open the public hearing. And I do like to remind whoever does come up and speak that you do have three minutes to address the council.
Okay, except me.
You can step up, Mr. Heeman.
To be council.
Just state your name and address for the record, if you would please, sir.
George Heeman, 323 Palomino Road, Isanty, Minnesota. I'm the subject of the hearing tonight. I have some new... I have some testimony, and I'd like to present to council, I made five copies, so you each can have it. This is... This is wrote up the night I received the letter from me. I have the original letter that my girlfriend wrote up at that time. Her name was Angela. I've been trying to get ahold of her to... prove to you guys that I have a witness to that letter. That may take a little bit of time, it's been 28 years. Gather my thoughts here. As you know, my main objection to the assessment hearing in itself was that I received notice from the city of Isanty that letter proves that I was going to be assessed. The first time I ever heard I was going to be assessed was the date my 30-day appeal period was over, at 8:30 at night. When I approached council last time, I explained to you that I thought it was the day before the hearing. Well, one of the three letters that I gave you when I sat down and I put the time period together, I realized the letter was dated the 20th of August, and the notice was given to me the 21st. So I was thinking, I got the letter the night before the meeting, and that isn't true. I sat down and put the timeline together, and I realized that that's why I was so upset. The first time I'd ever even heard I was getting assessed for the Palomino Road project was 30 days after the appeal process was already up, which is, which would occur under Minnesota State Statute 429.081. So when I introduced those letters to council and... to show that fact, you guys agreed with me. The basis of the letters, that procedural procedure was not done correctly back in 1991. There's very strict procedure that needs to be done when you have a special assessment and you want to oppose it upon a citizen. And there's, there's a long checklist that the city has to go through. I just heard, I just heard Clark say that he had thought all the procedures were done at that time. They weren't. I've done data requests with Katie, and I was only given notice for one meeting. That I didn't get until after my 30-day appeal. But you also have to give me notice under State Statute 429.031, which is a preliminary hearing. That's when you're going to start the construction project, and you tell all the people involved with the project and who are going to be assessed, you have to have a public hearing for them. I, they never even sent notice out because they can't find it. I never even received it. So basically, the letter, the letter that I sent you guys to cease and desist is basically stating that you can't go for, you can't cherry pick a state statute and go straight to 429.061, which you guys want to assess me under, or reassess. In order to reassess somebody, you can only do it under, and Clark had it close, he just misquoted the statute last time, 429.071. But in order to reassess somebody under that statute, they had to have gone to district court. And the district court judge then would send it back to council, and the council would reassess. There's no state statute to just reassess me. You abated my assessment a month ago. I don't know it.
We gotta wrap this up, Mr. Heeman. I can only give you three minutes, unfortunately.
No. Hold on, one second.
You can give additional time for a public hearing.
No, 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 no. No. No, I have the rules right here, you guys, you're missing from it. Just stop. Where are the rules? I'll hand them out to everybody. Here they are. These are the rules of the proceeding that was given to me the night that they gave me the assessment letter, one day after my right to appeal, 28 years ago. Believe me, this can go on for three hours, and it will, because I have a lot to say.
It's no requirement that it go on for three hours, Mr. Mayor, you don't need to move.
I wouldn't like you not to go that long, Mr. Heeman.
Well, I wouldn't like it to go that long either, but here's how it goes. I can call witnesses. I have a right to object to all proceedings. Any objections, it clearly states, after the city has presented all its evidence, the objector may call witnesses, present such testimony as the objector desires. The same procedure for questioning of the city's witnesses will be allowed, followed with the objector's witnesses. This, you have to hear all objections I have about this proceeding. There's no timeline. If you want to put timeline on it and have me to sit down, I mean, you can pay my district court bill too. I mean, seriously.
Well, let's get to the brass tacks.
Okay, the brass tacks. Well, we can just go right to it.
I appreciate that.
I'm missing the windshield. Okay. So you've all read my letter about my cease and desist. Are you ready to make a vote and end this proceedings right now? And before you do, Clark, can you tell them the exact precise language they would need to end this proceeding now and all future proceedings, and keep my taxes abated?
Mr. Heeman, you can address your comments to the, to the presiding officer, the mayor, and I will respond to any questions they might have.
Okay. That was my question. What would be the motion? So you guys won't have to sit and think about it, or argue about it, or, you know, at least you're all clear what the motion would be.
Are there any questions on this right now?
I want to know where Clark has to say, well, this is, are we hitting? Is he hitting it pretty accurately, or what's your view on that?
No, I disagree with his interpretation of the statutes, and I believe that this, as I stated earlier, that the proper procedures were followed based on the record from the 1991 assessment. The hearing tonight is for him to make whatever objections he has, which he's already made. And he's provided a letter that outlines some specific citations. I haven't had an opportunity, since it was just provided this evening, to look through all of them, but based on my review of the statute, my review of the records, my discussion with the city engineer, I believe that the procedure was properly followed and that the council's in a position to determine whether you wish to implement the deferred assessment pursuant to your determination that it's appropriate to proceed, or whether you choose not to.
Okay, I have a question. When was my notice given out under Minnesota State Statute 429.031 informing me there would be a preliminary hearing on the Palomino Road project? Where is the certification that I was invited to that meeting? And where is the minutes from that meeting? Also, I should make a note, in 1991, it clearly states that meeting would be tape recorded. That meeting alone would exaggerate me, I'm certain of it. Now, when I asked for that tape recording, guess what? It doesn't exist. And it clearly states on the notice I received from the city at that time that that meeting would be taped recorded. Now, I have no evidence even to defend myself of what happened back in 1991, other than a few scribbles and minutes that I have from 1991. I mean, that's ridiculous in itself, especially when the letters clearly states that I received from the city of Isanty that that meeting would be taped recorded, and nobody has it, just like they didn't have my 1991 file until the day I present my paperwork. Or when I ask for figures for the assessment in itself, I don't get them until the end of the assessment hearing. I mean, I can't even argue the amount of my assessment tonight because I haven't even had time to look over that. I mean, how can I even argue the price? I mean, this whole thing has been watched from, from the get-go. I'll just say this. From the very beginning, I put an olive branch out to this city. I put an olive branch out when they asked me to give them a permanent easement for the 91 Palomino project. I gave an olive branch out when they wanted a temporary easement. I gave it to them free of charge. Why? Because they said they were never going to assess me for the project, and I wanted to do my part. Again, here in 1991, I wanted to not be here. Right now, I approached Josie, I approached Don twice, I approached the mayor twice, saying, "Tell them about this assessment, and that it could come up, and that we should resolve this administratively and figure out how to go forward with it." But because there was political motivation behind it with Ross, it ended up getting to where it is right now.
I'm going to ask that you not...
Well, that's true. I mean, why are we here? There's only one reason we're here, and that's Ross.
Let's refrain from it, okay?
We're here, we're here.
We're here to...
...actions in 1991.
Correct.
None of us here...
None of us were here then, because it's...
Right!
On council. So we're, we're here to dig through the mud, so to speak, to make sure that we clean it off and move forward.
Right.
Let's not attack...
And that's what I'm asking.
And I would ask the same from anybody on this council. Let's not attack you, you don't attack us.
Well, Ross has attacked me many times.
Okay, now, Mr. Heeman, it's irrelevant, I'm just asking you about to do it today, please.
Okay, we'll, we'll change the, change the rules, and that's fine with me. The other thing is, is I'm one of the few witnesses surviving this. The person that I bought the property from, I bought it under contract for deed, he also had to sign off on that permanent easement I gave the city for free in lieu of what I thought was never be assessed for Palomino Road. His insurances from Robertson at the time too was, "Don't worry, you're not going to be assessed." I mean, why would he want all of a sudden $10,000 more onto his property on top of the contract for deed? The other thing is, is that letter clearly states that I just gave you from the night that I received, the only notice I ever received from the city by saying, "I never knew I was going to be assessed." I have the original handwritten letter, and I have witness, if you need it in the future, if that letter and my sworn testimony is not good enough. And back to my question, when was I ever given hearing under 429.031 because you cannot assess me under 429.061 without first giving me a hearing under 429.031? You can't do it. There's strict procedures to follow for a special assessment. It's to protect the rights of the constituent and to protect the city themselves from further litigation or people up here doing what they're doing right now, saying, "Why didn't you do this?"
Unfortunately, the council called and said, "None of us were here." I can't, I can't honestly tell you that you're lying. I couldn't prove that. I can't prove that, that Mr. Robertson did the same thing. There's no proof to say either way on that, other than what I see in front of me is, is, you know, what the assessment was given to you by him, it doesn't state anything in there that you were, were not going to reassess that at any time.
You've seen the letters where he clearly admitted that I never was able to... You've seen the three letters that I originally gave you that prove that Mr. Robertson knew he messed up. He knew he messed up. He would have never gave me those letters. Come on, guys. He admitted. He would have never gave me a letter saying, "Mr. Heeman has a right to a hearing someday" if he would have known that what he did was on the up and up, not under the table, and was legal at the time. Did I drink all that water? Oh geez. So it's a mess, you guys. And even the IRS, even the IRS has its own rules that they're not going to go after a tax when you know it's going to cost them more than the tax itself to recover. And if you guys are really going to be lazy-minded, not hear all the facts, and just send this off to district court, that is a lose for the community, yourself, and for me. I mean, you should sit and listen to all the facts. You should answer all my questions. I mean, I still haven't had an answer about the preliminary hearing. You know why? Because 25 years old staff knows they have no record of me being invited to the preliminary hearing, which you have to have in order to invite me to this meeting, 429.061.
The minutes indicate preliminary hearing was held, and based on the review, it appears the statutory criteria were met at that time. Recovery of the same ground...
I've never seen, I asked for that data request.
Did you give copy of the minutes?
No! I have nothing for the preliminary hearing. What date was it held?
In the, in the minutes, it was probably the August 20th.
That was the assessment hearing? Well, then they never had an assessment hearing. Proof, right here. Because that's what was so confusing about this. I have the minutes from there. That's crazy. So, so we're here for a preliminary hearing and not an assessment hearing? Nobody on the Palomino Road project had an assessment hearing. They never had one.
There were, you have the assessment rule before you.
Right!
Notes were heard, there were numerous properties that were assessed that were here that were deferred because they weren't within the city limits. Here's, here's... One was deferred because it was, the project could not be completed until further conditions were met, and those still haven't been met. But it wasn't a similar situation to Mr. Heeman's. Records indicate that those things were done in 1991, based on my review.
Has there, has there been minutes given to, given sent to him?
As far as I know, the staff has provided copies of all of the...
Has minutes been sent to Mr. Heeman?
Where did you...
Of, of that hearing?
Of what we have recorded, yes.
Okay, is there proof that you received?
No. I have copies of all the data requests.
Okay, but I mean, is there, did she come again from you, or did you mail them to him?
Some were emailed, someone picked up a person. There was one data request where they took pictures of them, so they did pick one different.
Well, I think, I guess I would have to see the minutes of all this. Heeman argued with him on that.
Thank you.
So, I mean, we can, we can sit up there for 14 more years arguing this whole point.
At some point, we need to trust our attorney, that our attorney has given us advice that everything has been, all eyes have been done, and he's a big cross. That's what the League of Minnesota Cities protects us against.
Exactly.
And our attorney has, has advised us that everything has been done in order. We could stand up here for hours and listen to this. We could table it for another day and do this all over again. I don't think we're going to get any further, and I don't think we're going to move any further from a attorney's decision of, "We are in our statutory authority to do this."
You're not.
And we are in direct disagreement with Mr. Heeman.
You're not.
So I don't think we're going to move anywhere, whether we table it or we move forward today.
If the council's going to have discussion, it'll do that after the public hearings, see if there's any other comments or discussion.
Here, here is the assessment hearing itself. If, if Clark just said that the meeting that I was given notice of was the meeting under Statute 429.031, then here's the assessment hearing. Unfinished business, Palomino Road Assessment, Resolution 2128. It was done on the 17th day of September. They never had a public hearing!
You just said the preliminary hearing, and now you're talking about the assessment hearing on September 17th, I believe. But in any event, you can go on to the...
So what am I here for? Am I, what, what's, you're, you're saying this is the preliminary hearing because that's what was held on the 20th?
No, I think you're confused. You said there was never a preliminary hearing, I believe that was August 20th. You said there was never an assessment hearing, that was on September 17th. So that appears to be the case.
There was never any notice sent. I've only, the, 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 staff only has one certified copy. That supposedly a notice was sent to me to an adverse that I do not live at, one time. Any normal procedures, there's two notices sent, one for the preliminary and one for the assessment hearing. We can both agree that that didn't happen, that only one time was a notice sent out to me. That we can agree on. Council, can we agree on that?
Here's, here's where I'm standing on this, Mr. Heeman, is we can't have any discussion or move forward or backwards or sideways, or whatever direction we choose to go with this. We can't do anything until we close this public hearing. So in order for us to even consider doing anything, we have to close this public hearing. So...
I object to closing because I have not even begun to give my objections, not even closed. So we can adjourn, we can adjourn it to a... So, we can adjourn, we can adjourn it to another time. And that's what the rules say you can do, is you can adjourn it.
I can't do that, not a public hearing. I, I have to close the public hearing in order to make any, any movement period. I have to close this public hearing.
Public hearing, a public hearing, you cannot.
I can't make any decision.
You can't make a decision on a public hearing. Public hearing is just to hear your information.
Correct.
Well, I'm not done giving my information. The question isn't how, you know, I, okay, I'll ask you, will you ask Clark if I was invited to two mail, excuse me. If he gave out official notice for two meetings in nineteen ninety-one? If there's record of two mailing lists separate for nineteen ninety-one?
I already know if he was the attorney at that time.
Yeah, of course he was.
In nineteen ninety-one.
He was the attorney back then.
I mean, talking about attorney for the city.
He was.
I don't, I can't answer that because I would know.
I can, because I got all, I got paperwork with his name all over it.
Here's my point here, is I'm not trying to, uh, I'm not trying to compare what we have versus what you have. We're, we're running circles here, Mr. Heeman, we need to get to the brass tacks. Let's get to the brass tacks, let's get this, this public hearing closed so we can make our decision on, are we going to table it? Are we going to let it go or are we going to continue forward? We have to close the public hearing in order to go any further.
I can't fall for that. I can't fall for you closing the public hearing because my questions haven't been answered. I have a right to call witness. So, I guess I will call Katie because she is the clerk. Were two notices ever sent to me from nineteen ninety-one concerning the proposed hearing and the assessment hearing?
I don't think it's appropriate to call Katie as a witness for something that happened in nineteen ninety-one when she wasn't.
But she is the city clerk and she has access to the information. Who else would I call?
The records indicate that notice was sent, the statute, uh, that you're citing, four-twenty-nine-point-oh-three-one also states that, uh, notice of the hearing will be mailed ten days in advance.
Thank you.
Uh, that indicates, well, I'm not finished yet, Mr. Heeman. The area proposed to be assessed and must contain a statement that reasonable estimate of the impact of the assessment will be available at the hearing. But failure to give mailed notice or any defects in the notice does not invalidate the proceedings. So, um, he's wrong.
Reading it, actually.
I'm reading it from, uh, from four-twenty-nine-oh-three-one, subdivision one, preparation of plans, notice of hearing. But in any event, uh, I think this, unless you have other information that's new rather than objecting to the procedure, which is your right, uh, to do, there's nothing more that, uh, I've heard that's new other than you're reiterating the objections that you have. The council can determine if there's any other information that, uh, you have that you want to give.
Yes, I do.
There's new information you have, Mr. Heeman?
The assessment role, when I asked for it from the county, the only person on the assessment role is Kathy. Um, I, where's the valid assessment role that is available? I don't see no valid assessment role.
My understanding is, is that you were provided that information.
Well, I have one from nineteen ninety-one, but I was abated. You guys abated that. I don't.
You were given the assessment role from nineteen ninety-one, which
Right.
is a basis for the assessment that's being imposed now. The purpose of this hearing is for you to express any objections that you have, which you've done a good job in doing. If you have any other information that you would like to share with the council, now would be the time to do that.
Yes. The assessment here, the assessment role is not valid. You abated my taxes. So, you, what Clark wants to do is use an old assessment role from nineteen ninety-one. I'm no longer on it. You guys abated my taxes.
No, we did, we did not do that. The action you took was to set aside the, uh, resolution that you adopted because that notice had been sent to the, to the county to abate that on the initial rule. And then to hold the hearing pursuant to four-twenty-nine-point-oh-seven-one because it appeared that an error had been made and that, uh, the hearing had not been properly scheduled. Doesn't change the research that was done at the time, the assessment role that was, um, repaired. And, uh, that's my opinion based upon the review of those things. No, Mr. Heeman's objection to that, Mr. Heeman, uh, that's what you would have to appeal from if you choose to appeal.
Or if I walk out of here on a one dollar, it would be appealed. And that's what I'm trying to say. You really wanna spend more of the city's money? The right thing to do for the community is to amelie's proceedings. You, it, it, it's so old, you've already reassessed me for another road. The road you're assessing me for no longer exists. There's nothing left of it. No water, no sewer, no road, no curbs, no gutters. Because you completely redumb it and you'll assess me a second time. The other reason it's good for the community is this thing is so flawed, not only now, back then, that to bring it to district court, it's gonna be way more than the assessment. We all know that. And I know it's gonna cost me more and I'm only doing it because it's the right thing to do. I've never argued an amount of money. What I've argued is the procedurals, the procedure they did in nineteen ninety-one, how they didn't inform me, how they lied to me and said they would never assess me to basically steal.
Mr. Heeman, do you have anything new?
Yes.
Cause you're, you're just repeating yourself in things we already know.
Yes.
We already know what you're saying, sir. I'm looking for something.
Yes, I have something.
Or if you have.
Yes.
To state your objections to this.
Yes.
That's what this, this public hearing is for, sir.
Clark just mentioned that he, through the county, used Minnesota statute four-two-nine-zero-seven-one. He can't use it. I just heard you quote that. And that state statute has nothing to do with these proceedings. That's the first thing I wanna say. The other thing I wanna say, because you abated my taxes and you did not set a time limit. When you abate taxes, you have to set a time limit. All that's set on the resolution is that you abated my taxes and there would be a hearing. There was no time limit on it. Because of that, under statute, it automatically stays abated, under my knowledge, for eight years because you didn't set a date. That's another objection I have.
Do you agree with that, clerk?
No.
Okay.
I'm learning a lot this week.
We gotta wrap this up, Mr. Heeman. I need to close this so we can.
I would, I would be happy with an adjournment because I haven't even had time to go over the figures because they were just given to me today by Katie. I have no idea what the.
You mean the table, you mean the table, this is what you're asking for because you have.
Basically, because I just received the figures of the assessment themselves. I've never even seen it for twenty-eight years. I have no idea the cost per foot, anything until today.
Can I, can I close this public hearing so we can make our decision here and what to do, sir?
Is that true, Katie?
Yes, the documents from nineteen eighty-one, obviously, the majority of us did not work for the city during that time, so some information was not kept in the same spot. We did find some new information.
The record also.
Justice, Martin.
The record also indicates that that information was provided to Mr. Heeman's attorney upon his request in nineteen ninety-one.
Who is dead, who never gave me a copy of it because it was correspondence between him and the city. I never received those copies. I retained them as attorney. Of course, if I ever would've needed them in the future, I would've gotten them. The first I ever seen them was today.
Okay, and, and I'm, I'm not arguing that, but you, sir, I'm well aware you just got it today. I know for a fact you did. So, if, if we can close this hearing, we can talk amongst ourselves here and amongst the other people and, and decide what we're gonna do, sir.
One last thing, then.
One last thing.
I would like to be able to, if for any reason this council decided even go forward with one dollar of an assessment, I would like the opportunity to argue set price of assessment because I haven't had the opportunity even look over the information.
Fair enough, Mr. Heeman. At this time, is there anybody else that'd like to speak in? All right, then I'd like to close the public hearing. And at this time, I'd ask the council if you have any questions or anything to discuss.
So, Katie said she just gave Mr. Heeman the records from nineteen ninety-one today.
She gave the figures, Councilman Burgley.
She gave those.
Figures?
All of it. Sorry.
Ms. Burgley, go ahead.
All of the information that has been requested prior, they did receive that information. There was a small amount that was given to him today. Just a couple of things on the board.
This one he was given today.
Just the front page or the whole thing?
The whole thing.
Now, Clark, you stated that in nineteen ninety-one, you personally sent this to his attorney, correct?
No, I didn't state that. The city did. The records of the city indicate that Mike Robertson corresponded with, is that an attorney? Uh, Mr. Barry Blong was.
But I, I, I can remind the council that we did see letters from, from that last meeting.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Would that be common procedure at the time when somebody retains an attorney that we would send all correspondence to that attorney?
Yes.
And in legal practice, if correspondence is sent to that attorney, it's, isn't expected that it's given to the client without, do you have to prove that he gave it to the client?
Well, we would assume that that happened, Mr. Heeman saying that didn't happen. The correspondence went in, someone reporting to be to his, his attorney, that would be the normal, um, communication channel.
Any other questions? Again, I didn't mean to interrupt Councilman Lawrence here, but we did see the letters that, um, this city administrator was at that time, Mr. Robertson, if I recall right. We did see those letters last meeting. Uh, the only one that wouldn't have saw it would've been Councilman Burgley. He was somewhere sunny on vacation. Uh, other than that, I think we've had all and everything presented to us in this matter.
I do have a question for our attorney.
Go ahead, Councilman Burgley.
Um, Mr. Heeman said in his last closing remark that, uh, he wanted the opportunity to, um, for lack of a better term, debate the final amount, is that well within his rights?
Well, certainly he can challenge any aspect. He challenged the procedural aspects, um, uh, he certainly could challenge the amount, so.
So, is that, is that in his rights, so for an additional hearing? If he, I thought I heard him say on the way out, if we decided to assess him, he wanted to debate the amount. Is that an additional hearing?
Well, you would have the prerogative of continuing this matter for additional proceeds if you, uh, feel it is appropriate and necessary to do so. Uh, again, the record indicates that he had that information, uh, back in nineteen ninety-one. But that would be.
That is your question, Councilman Burgley?
Yes.
Any other questions we have?
Do we have any record of anyone receiving letters back then, from back then?
Uh, yes, the, the assessment role that you have in front of you indicates the mailing address.
Those were all.
That those were all sent. In Mr. Heeman's case, evidently the matter, the letter was not delivered because he had a change of address, uh, or some other circumstance. But based on the address that the city had at the time, the notice was in fact mailed. Uh, he's correct, based on the information that he presented previously, that, uh, he did not physically receive, uh, that. And that was why Mr. Robertson, based on the letter that he sent out later, stated that this hearing would be held in the event, uh, of the property ever became annexed to the city uh, prior to the implementation of the, uh, spec, uh, assessments. And when that letter came to our attention, um, that was when the council took the action uh, to, uh, set aside the prior abatement that was implemented before we had that information and to reset the hearing based on what Mr. Robertson had represented would be the case. And that's why we're here this evening.
So, I know the assessment was set for whatever the place is, somewhere over ten thousand dollars. Was, because it was set aside or whatever we're calling it, because he was part of the city, was that, was his ability to question that amount? Set aside to saying, okay, because we're not gonna assess you at this time, we're gonna set aside your ability to question that amount?
No, he had the right to question it at this hearing.
At this hearing.
Which he did.
Continuation, yes.
Questioning the whole process. So.
He didn't question, I don't think he questioned the amount here.
Well, he said he would like to be in a, uh, a meeting when we do discuss that.
So, what are we here to decide whether we vote for it or not? Or.
Do we move forward, do we?
Or does he say, we're saying that it feels low, ten thousand dollars? Or are we saying, we're gonna give him a chance to debate that as well?
No other residents, residents has been allowed to debate with their assessment ones and multiple residents have been given deferred assessments and are actively going to have to pay them.
Yes, it's the council's problem if you wanna continue it for him to analyze the numbers and present any, uh.
I, 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 I'll tell you, I, I hate to do it because I hate to drag this out any further, but I would make the motion to able this so we can look into it a little further, get our ducks in a row, make sure amounts are correct. Let's make sure we cross our Ts and dot our Is.
And perhaps our, our, uh, city engineer, uh, could weigh in on his review of the assessment role and the amount of the assessment, how that was, was set, if that would be helpful to council.
You are more than welcome to, Mr. Cook, if you'd like to.
Uh, yeah, uh, so, given this document that had the, uh, how the assessment was broken down back in nineteen ninety-one, it shows that they assessed the curb and gutter a hundred percent, um, of what they were allowed to do. Uh, sixty percent was, of the street was assessed, twenty percent a storm, um, a hundred percent of the water main that abated his property and the one water service that was stopped. Um, all of that was following the policy at the time. And the, uh, the breakdown of the costs, um, appears to also follow the assessment policy at the, uh, at the time in nineteen ninety-one. So, the, uh, the numbers generally check out and do follow the procedure at the time.
Clark, may I have a quick question for you? Um, what's the appeal process for this? If we decide tonight and Mr. Heeman chooses to appeal it, what's his process?
Well, process is for him to appeal it, uh, to district court in a specific timeframe. Uh, it's included in the notice that, uh, he was, uh, provided, um, under Minnesota statute four-twenty-nine-point-oh-eight-one, um, having served the, um, notice that he is objecting to the assessments, uh, must be, uh, uh, notice given within thirty days after the adoption of the assessment. And, uh, so if he adopted tonight, he would have thirty days to, uh, to serve the notice that he's appealing that. And then he needs to file that notice with the district court within ten days uh, after he serves that notice on the mayor or the city clerk. And that's, uh, contained in the notice of hearing, uh, that was provided to him, notifying him of tonight's hearing. I assume no question that he received that. Our records indicate that, sir.
So, there is a process to appeal, if there is a process to argue further if we do make the decision tonight.
We have the, the, the city's wanting to do it. I mean, it's ridiculous. You guys should have, should have the power to do this.
District forty-two.
At least giving.
Mr. Heeman. You're not getting railroaded, Mr. Heeman. I've had enough of the comments, okay?
Sure. Well, as tough as this is to do, I mean, we have a lot of our hired staff, you know, telling us that he'd been given fair and just hearing, that type of thing. And it's hard for me to read all that information and go beyond and above that. So it's very impressive that you did your homework. I wish you would let me present. How the property that was assessed was...
Mr. Heeman. I need a motion to do something here, council. I have set on the table by myself the motion to table this so we can dig further into it.
And what would we accomplish with that?
Well, I'd make sure we cross our Ts and dot our Is. Make sure our ducks are all in a row here.
So that we don't... So you don't take up a council meeting with it? I'm going to suggest that we do it at a council in the whole. Is that proper? No, it's not proper.
Oh, you would only have to... you would only be able to take action at a council meeting.
Well, I mean, I don't mean to take action. We could debate it and then go to the council. Is that proper?
I don't think we would go any further by spinning our wheels debating this topic any further. Our city staff has given an opinion. Mr. Heeman has given an opinion. I think we just need to move forward. I will state publicly that I will not make a motion. I will not make this motion tonight. I need it from one of the four other guys. So I am not standing up to make a motion here tonight, but I think we need to move this forward. Every other taxpayer that was on that Palomino Road project paid that Palomino Road project. We have to do what is right for the residents of the city. We also have to do what's right for the residents of the city moving forward. So I want to also plant a seed that we look into the future of our assessment process, our deferred assessment process, and our annexation process, so we don't ever allow this to happen again. Having to deal with something that the can was kicked to us 25 years later totally is horrible.
Horrible.
Is horrible.
Correct.
We have 30 years normally to collect on an assessment. It should be able to be collected on a deferred assessment within 30 years. If we defer an assessment on a township property, we should be able to tell them, pay it voluntarily within 15 years. If you don't pay it within 15 years, we're going to annex you. And then you will pay it within 15 years. They would be the most friendly, the most non-controversial way to do it, and we would not be in this position today if that's what the process was back then. So I think we need to fix this wrong in the future and not do it again. But we also have to be fair to that resident that's ever paid their bills to the city. Nobody wants to pay their taxes, including myself, but we all have to pay them.
I guess this is going to district court then, so...
Do I have a motion?
Sorry, George.
Motion to assess. I have a motion to assess by Councilman Burgley. Do I have a second?
What are my cards? You just frigging told me you'd give me a chance to frigging question the mother of the assessment, and now you just railroaded me.
But you're not saying that, Mr. Heeman.
Last council, love you, Mr. Mayor.
He had so much harassment on this. This is a national news story.
Let's go.
He had so much harassment.
I'm not going to tolerate that lack of audacity, this council chairman.
You will send the motion?
Second by Councilman Lawrence here to assess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Any of you saying subsistence? Therefore, that motion carries
five zero. Moving on to business items, resolution 2019, accepting the 2018 audit and financial statement and presentation of 2018 annual finance report and management letter, AEM LLP. I believe Mr. Steve McDonald is present to present that. Mr. McDonald.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm going to go through the highlights of the 2018 audit and financial statements. You have a copy of the PowerPoint in front of you. That's a summary of all the highlights that are contained in the report. We'll go through a few things here. The audit opinion and what that entails, and then some financial results, and then we also have some ratio analysis. I'll walk through fairly quickly. So I'm on the second page there. First off, ultimately what we do is give an opinion on the financial statements. And what we say is that the numbers are materially correct and all the appropriate disclosures have been made. The opinion we came to is what's referred to as an unmodified opinion. So that's a clean opinion and the highest level of assurance you can get on the financial statements. It doesn't... Basically, it says that the results of our audit met our objectives. We consider the city's compliance with specific state statutes. These would be things like how you'd spend money or deposit money or bond a project, a sub project, or those kind of things. And we had one finding related to our testing of legal compliance, and that related to there's a requirement for pledge collateral for cities' deposits. And at the end of December, we just out of compliance with that. December's a big deposit month where you get your tax settlement, and often that can exceed what the bank may have. We consider the internal control of the city helps us plan the audit. We had a couple of other findings to discuss there related to internal control. First one is a common one. Small cities often have challenges adequately segregating some of the accounting functions. So our internal control comment related to preparation of financial statements. City does a good job of getting things together, but there isn't necessarily the check and balance when it comes to preparing the financial statements. There's good monitoring in place. We walked through the draft. There's good understanding of the numbers that are in there. So we see that that mitigates some of that risk. Let's see. The next page, we have a graph that highlights general fund balance relative to the following year's budget. So following year... or the budget is the red line up above. You can see that your 2019 budget was scheduled to be 4.1 million. The gray line in the middle is the targeted fund balance. You have a target range of 30 to 50%, of which you plan to spend. That comes from state auditor, GFOA, other organizations that follow city finance, say that that's a good targeted range. Your fund balance dropped in 2018 to 34% of your following year's budget. And I'll go through the budget and actual statement next here, but, well, it did drop. It's still within a range where working capital is still in place to pay all the bills. I believe you have a fund balance policy that you would consider. You could... And I think there's a mechanism there to reap or grow the fund balance. Okay. Next, we have a summary of the revenue expenditures compared with budget. As I mentioned, fund balance went down during 2018. And you can see the expenditures were over budget by 803,000. That's where the business subsidy was recorded in the general fund. Council did approve that. It just wasn't anticipated in the 2018 budget.
So I don't want to stop you, Mr. McDonald, but what I'm seeing here in the 2018 general fund balance here is the fund balance in the general 18 fund dropped significantly... significantly, excuse me, primarily to an $850,000 business subsidy to the hotel using water sewer funds to be repaid through taxes over the next 10 years, correct? Is that what I'm seeing here?
I think that's my understanding.
Okay. Holy buckets, that's a problem. I got to state it for every resident in the city of Ixani that obviously something that's dumped in this council's lap. There are ways to fix this, fortunately. There's a... I can say this quickly then, Mr. McDonald. I'll let you continue on. There's a 10-year average tax rate of 69.8%, a five-year average rate of 79.6%. We're currently at 61.8%. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. McDonald. The tax rate could simply move back towards historical averages, is what I was thinking. Or we can modify the fund balance policy. The current city policy requires, as you said, a 50% fund balance. If you're over that, you must use that to reduce taxes. And if you're under, you must determine a plan to restore that in two years. And it could modify fund balance policy to provide more time to restore fund balances as well.
And we're under that right now, right?
Well, I...
34%.
We're... We have an $850,000.
Oh, you're a tight percentage. I'm just a tight percentage.
Yeah, I mean, right now, we're at 61.8%.
But we need to understand that this money is not coming from cash out of the general fund.
It came out of water and sewer.
It came out of water sewer with a plan to pay it back in 10 years.
Yeah, but this is obviously a problem, Councilman Lawrence.
Mr. McDonald, when... before this finding was made, did Finance Director Becker bring the issue to your attention and ask a question about how to document it properly?
I don't recall exactly what the question was.
Okay. And if he would have documented it with that 10-years table in there, would the finding have been made? But being you guys took it and to answer this question, then made the finding, there's now a finding in there.
Well, the... No, the recording of the expenditure wasn't done correctly. And so that's where a finding was on internal controls. We didn't give guidance on how to make it in the first place.
So what he said, Councilman Lawrence, is that obviously it wasn't done correctly. So now this becomes a problem to this council. And pretty much him doing his job, he found it. And when I went over what he found, I found it. And to me, this is a problem, and we're here to fix that problem.
Well, I think we're mixing two different things. I don't think that the recording of the subsidy didn't end up in the right place for the expense. The water and sewer borrowed the money to do it, but the expense is out of the general fund. So it was correct that we ended up correcting that. In the end, the substance of the transaction was correct in the first place. But what it leaves you with is the general fund does have a fund balance that decreased over the year.
$850,000.
You're out here not in compliance with your internal fund balance policy, but that also can be seen as a guide. And a reserve level of 35 to 50% will still provide adequate cash flow. It doesn't provide excess funds for funding capital or large emergency purchases, those kind of things.
And then historically in the city of Ixani, we've always under budgeted, historically, correct? We always have circumstances at the end of the year. Last year, we had almost $300,000.
I think on the revenue side, you had... Yeah, you've always had revenue.
And I've seen our fund balance go from 50 to almost 90% some years in one year because of proper budgeting and proper managing of the staff. So just like last year, if we end up at the end of the year with $230,000 at our last meeting that we realized is over, we put that into the general fund and just pay this down a lot faster. And there's no tax increase, no nothing. And you re-increase your... And you may end up going through this. If we adjust the two-year payoff, you may end up going through this without having any impact to the city budget, correct?
Could possibly have that. Yeah, the... If the pay... If the policy is implemented to pay back the general fund to get it to 50%, that may create some issues. It would require transfers from other funds. It would...
Or a tax, of course, if nobody wants to do.
Nobody wants to do it.
But it's... We're at 37%. There's a plan. We can get to pay that back in a reasonable amount of time. 37% is not the end of the world, right?
Yeah, but I... That would be my assessment of it. If it's a trending down, so 2019, you get through mid-year and you see that you're not hitting budget of revenue or expenditures, you have another issue to think about. But as it stands right now, you're not in a critical state to pay the bills.
Something also to think about, council, we have a staffing shortage here, too, that is every day, every month or day that goes by that we don't have a staff, that our staff full staff, we are... We have budgeted money that's not being spent, and we're already into the second quarter. So that will also add to our bottom line at the end of the year.
It is in this resolution, Councilman Lawrence, to be full staff, though, so you know where.
Yeah.
I think we need to interrupt you, Mr. McDonald. Mr. Becker, if you have anything to add to that, are we good? All right, Mr. McDonald, if you can continue, and my apologies, sir.
No problem.
I just saw that as a huge problem. All right, it'll do.
Okay, sources of revenue. We have a graph there that highlights the past three years. As you can see, the majority of your revenue comes from taxes. Intergovernmental, the second largest area. On the expenditure side, again, we'll see consistency in... from year over year, except for in the other category. That's where the business subsidy expense was recorded. And like most cities, we work with public safety as being the largest area of expenditure. Now, the city also has another group of funds referred to as capital projects funds. Here, we have a fund balance in total, if you add all the funds together, of about 494,000. We have a couple of funds that currently carry a deficit, and there's some explanatory with those. The Palomino Road Street improvements has MSA dollars that have been received but can't be recognized because of accounting standards. So that deficit is still offset with cash reserves. Special revenue funds. In total, we have 798,000 in fund balance. The largest or second largest is the revolving loan fund. In total, we have over $200,000 of loans outstanding in that fund. So the fund balance is being used for a purpose outlined in that loan fund. Debt service funds. Highlights here that cash balance and total assets are positive. So you're accumulating sufficient resources. You have three funds that are matured, and in reviewing the draft, we talked about the opportunities that may be afforded there to close those funds to permanent capital fund or any other purpose of counsel being appropriate. Also, accumulating sufficient reserves in some of the other funds may be an opportunity to prepay if you look through the cash flow of each of those. And then, as you can see, in 2022, your volumes drop off fairly substantially and then remain consistent for the next six, seven years. All that assumes or is at the current, with current debt. Doesn't factor in any potential that you might have. Okay, the enterprise funds. We do cash flow in houses here, each of them. So this is the water fund. What I point out here is that cash balance at the end of the year is about $1,008,000, a fairly significant cash balance relative to what you might consider your working capital needs. So basically paying the bills and making sure you have enough for debt service is where that red line is set. Up on the bottom, up above, that blue line represents your operating receipts, so the amount that you collect from the utility bills. You can see that that's enough to cover the operating expenses, which is the gray area, and also helps fund debt service. Sewer fund looks similar, with good cash reserve, 2.5 million, operating receipts that exceed both debt service and operating expenses. So both of your water and sewer funds have healthy cash balances and good operating margins. Stormwater has grown over the past four years. It's improved each year. Currently is about $350,000. And again, if we look at that relative to a working capital target, we're sufficiently funded there. And then the revenue has exceeded expense for each of the four years presented. Your liquor store also does well. When we look at your gross profit margin, this one of the key areas of measurement for any liquor operation, you're at 27.6%. Statewide average is 25%. Statewide average is twenty-five percent. And that may seem kind of micro, getting into some of the details, but that really does help tell the story. What is your gross profit and what is your bottom-line net income? And both of those are good numbers. Thirteen percent to the bottom-line net income outperforms statewide averages. Your cash balance is four-hundred-and-two-thousand dollars at the end of the year. So that also appears to be sufficient to fund the operations. And I believe you have over three-hundred-thousand-dollar transfer that comes out the later twentieth year. So, it's, it's helping produce funds for, throughout the city. Okay, this graph is really intended to show you the total cash you have. The message that I talk about here is that the different colors of the, the bar identify the different sources. So often when people say, see, the city has ten million dollars in cash, it often gets interpreted that it's free to do whatever you want with it. But what this shows is that we have specific purposes for each of our, for all of those dollars. Okay, and then we have a few ratios. I'll go through these fairly quickly, if anybody wants to stop and talk about that, I'd be glad to go through that. First one's tax rate relative, and what we have is the cities, that's usually the blue bar that runs, or the blue line that runs across top. The other two are comparative, so, and we've got this information from the state auditor. So, we've accumulated all the cities in Iscany County and then all Class Four cities, which are in your same population band throughout the state. And overall, you can see tax rates are consistent with other cities in, in the county. Taxes per capita are all, are consistent with all of the peer groups. The current expenditures for capital, so how much you spend per person, that trends lower than, than comparative groups. And then, capital expenditures is going to bounce around year to year, depending on projects within the city. Okay, another positive is that the, well, I'll get to, let's see, this one, the debt service coverage. I mentioned both the enterprise funds have good cash balance relative to the operations. This does highlight that you, you generate enough cash to cover more than a hundred percent of the debt service obligations outstanding. Okay, any questions that, that we haven't gone through, or anything else I can address?
For Senator Steve?
Yes.
It's Mr. Steve McDonald.
You can be short with Steve.
Mr. McDonald. Any questions, Council?
Probably with the mayor, tell his concern, didn't you say it was paying anybody else?
My concern was just the eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar business subsidy. That was borrowed from the water and sewer fund.
What did you see, what did you do with that?
Well, those two options I gave. And of course, I brought my concern to our finance director. And I don't feel like I was wrong, Mr. Becker. If you would elaborate, and what I was thinking here, and the, you know, the, I mean, right now, we're at sixty-one point eight. We're going to have to pay this money back.
Well, this would be something to decide, for the council to decide during the budget process. I mean, fundamentally, we have two tools to rebuild fund balance. And it's, it's moving that tax rate up and/or modifying the fund balance policy. The, if we were to take our current fund balance policy, which requires a plan to replenish fund balance up to fifty percent within two years, and simply say, the council just simply needs to have a plan, which is common at many other cities, most cities do not have a two-year guideline, most of them aren't that conservative, that strict. If we simply did that, that would give the council considerable wiggle room. And, and, you know, the, the, the current state of the fund balance is still within the state auditor's recommended guidelines. So, we can, we can put forth a budget in twenty, for twenty-twenty that is palatable to everybody, I think. With work on it, but I think we can do it.
So that rests my concern then. Mr. McDonald, you did a fantastic job. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Motion, Mr. Ray?
We do need a motion to approve and accept.
Motion to approve and accept.
Second. I have a motion to approve and accept by Councilman Lawrence, and a second by Councilman Lundeen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries, five oh. A resolution for approving the brewery off-sale, brewery taproom, and Sunday liquor license application for first draft brewery. And I believe Mr. Warren, I'm sorry if I hack your last name.
Thunstrom.
Thunstrom is present. If you'd like to come forward, sir, if we have any questions for you, would you mind asking? Or answering, I should say?
I've never seen him lost for words.
I've never seen him without a clad flashy shirt, too, I think.
He ain't wearing shorts today.
It's not warm enough yet.
He was on his bike.
So you finally got through with this? I remember going through this a year or so ago.
Yeah, it takes a while.
Yeah.
Warren, when was the first meeting you were here? That you asked him for-
Additional use permits.
What, when was that?
Two years ago? No, not long, I believe there was no, a year ago November.
And that's when you started with the state, or how long before that did you start with the state?
No, you have to have a lease or a building, you have to have a permanent legal address before you can start the proceedings with the state or the feds.
Okay, so there's little more hoops than running, opening a coffee shop, right?
Yeah.
Well, it looks like you've almost done it, so, good job.
I have any questions for you? If there's any recommendations, I motion that we accept.
Second.
I would not disagree with that. So I have a motion from Councilman Lawrence to accept, and a second by Councilman Lawrence. All in, oop.
Lundeen.
Lundeen, I'm sorry, Lundeen, sorry.
What did I say?
He thinks both of you said Lundeen.
Oh. Sorry, I'm still jarred, fellas. I have a motion to accept from Councilman Lundeen, and a second from Councilman Lawrence. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same side. Congratulations, Warren, carries five oh.
Thanks, Warren, it's nice to see you.
Thank you, Warren. Moving on to G three, the overlap district zoning and ordinance discussion. Mr. Burgley, I understand you wanted this put on?
Yeah.
Have matter, sir.
All right, I just wanted to start by reading this first of all. I won't read the whole thing, so don't, don't anybody get impatient here. So here we got Highway sixty-five corridor, early district. Highway sixty-five provides the main entrance into Iscany from the north and south. Is the purpose of this district to enhance the first impression of Iscany through development of a corridor that is inviting, visually appealing, and a place that community members want to visit and passersby want to stop. This district is designed and intended to promote the development of an attractive view of the community from Highway sixty-five. If you scroll down, under subdivision three, it lists those things that are, are allowed to be in our permitted use. Although, I don't know how a government office fits in there. And, not that they're not visually appealing, but not too many people on a passersby want to stop. And one thing that's lacking very strangely from this is a funeral home. And I voted against this when we, when we had this come up, because I thought it was an insult to a fifty-year business in Iscany, who have a funeral home in the Highway sixty-five business district. And I know there was some other businesses in there as well. I don't think, I don't know if, I don't know if we're counting. I don't see it now. Anyway, something in here makes it sound like schools might be implied. Instruction, oh, our instruction learning center. Mary talked to you about this, and you mentioned that Minnesota equipment was not allowed to be in there as well. I mean, allowed, but they couldn't, there's things that they can't do as a result of being in this district now.
That is correct.
Yeah, so, I think we need to right it wrong and at least put in funeral homes.
Paul, can I speak to the funeral home portion of it?
Sure.
If we were to, well, first, government, the government entity, government building, I don't have an issue with it being out of there anyway, because it's tax-free. So why not take a tax-free part, thing off of the Highway sixty-five corridor? But the funeral homes, Strike Funeral Home sitting right there where it says, if we were to put Funeral Home back into that zoning ordinance, all that would do is allow more funeral homes to go on Highway sixty-five. It would not allow Strike to expand, because Strike can't expand under our current ordinance, because they don't have enough parking. So they would still be unable to expand their business. They would still be unable to do anything with their business. And the only thing it would do is allow competition to come for them. So, if that's what you want to do, great. But I don't know, I think what you have to look at is long-term, long-term tax impact. A small building on a large city lot on Highway sixty-five, I don't know if it's going to bring the tax revenue that you need from Highway sixty-five to give our residents the tax relief that they need. And that's the whole design of the very short space we have of Highway sixty-five. We need to capitalize on that space to get the highest tax value out of that space, so that every bit of tax dollars goes back to our general fund and to our residents, because all our infrastructure is paid off. So every building that gets built there, once it hits the tax rules, it goes right back to tax reduction. And if we allow a school, and yes, there is a school there that's tax-free, but if we allow another school to go there tax-free, that's a big lot that's taken up a lot of ta, high-dollar tax revenue. If we just put them three blocks off, Highway sixty-five, tax-free, there's a lot less tax revenue lost.
I'm not saying I want a school, I'm just saying, this, the school, if the school ever wanted to move, they would, they would have to move out of the business district. Just like, just like if, if, if Strike Funeral Home ever wanted to sell, they can sell. They'd have to shut down.
No, they can sell.
No, 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 I got that from the city attorney on Planning Commission Night. He said that they would eventually have to sell.
If they are empty for more than a year, it would be, they would not be permitted use anymore, I believe.
Well, you couldn't put another funeral home there, is what it amounts to. So if he sold that funeral home, there could never be a-
No, it, it can continue as long as it be non- Perhaps there's some misunderstanding, but if, if you have a legal non-conforming use, it's grandfathering. That can run with the land as long as the use continues. But if it's discontinued for a year or more, then it would not be permitted to resume for that particular type of use. But it runs with the land the same way that a conditional use, as long as the conditions are met, run with the land.
So, so basically, he's saying that if Strikes want to sell it, they could sell it to you, and you can have your funeral home in there, as long as your body and it isn't operating business. But if they go and shut down as a funeral home, and it sits for a year, then it's funeral home.
Right, I knew that coming- That's not what I was told Planning Commission, or at least that's not what I understood.
I didn't understand it that way either, to be honest with you.
You still have a chance of operating funeral home there.
Yeah, but I-
You just have to have-
You have to buy it while it's still operating.
And as a year.
You have to do, just like what Clark said.
Which I totally see, Councilman Burgley, where you were confused, I was too.
But I'm telling you, Planning Commission made the Strike salary back in the last row begging us not to pass this. And then they also came to council member, or council meeting night two and asked us not to pass this.
And, and Strikes were well aware, we had discussions with them before the meetings, they were well aware that their building is not able to be expanded with it being permitted into the zoning district. So, I was never, I never understood why it mattered, whether they were in it or not, because if they're not, if, if funeral homes are not allowed in that district, all it does is eliminate the competition in that district. And that's a good thing for Strikes.
Yeah, maybe it was, there was more transparency there, Councilman Burgley.
They were very well aware of that.
Well, I think, I was told that the mayor had a meeting with them, I don't know who else had a meeting with them. But I'm just telling you, Strikes did totally object to that.
And they did totally object to it.
Because they wanted to add on.
But they can't add on.
Yeah, and they can, and even if they're on a business, even if they were in a business district, and the space that they have, they still wouldn't be able to add on, because they wouldn't, the size of their lot to the building size and the impervious surface, they wouldn't be able to, even if they were built right over here, even on this lot. If they were to have too much impervious surface, they wouldn't be allowed to, by our city standard ordinance right now.
Currently, I believe their parking lot doesn't need to be, the current city parking lot is.
So. And they're, it, they wanted to add on six-hundred square feet, which doesn't sound like a lot. I feel for them, I get it, but our ordinances are our ordinances. And no matter what, if they wouldn't, if we, if we didn't put that into that quarter sixty-five order, they wouldn't have not, wouldn't, wouldn't have been able to add on anyway. They just don't have enough green space for, for, for that area for lots of it.
And it's the, the other thing with Minnesota equipment, too, is the same argument there, is Minnesota equipment's there, they've been there. We're not allowing any more of them, any more auto lots, any more lots for sales on Highway sixty-five.
But they could also sell to you, essentially.
Sell to me.
And you could keep running that business.
Running Minnesota equipment.
I think that's where our confusion was coming from.
But can they expand?
No.
It, it depends on their lot size and how much available space.
And Clark may be able to that.
Well, then you definitely know the lot size, like Dan said.
Yeah, you'd have to have a lot size, and the green space.
But in those situations, say Minnesota equipment can't expand, or there's something there. We have incentives in other areas to get them in another lot in our city that's an industrial lot. We have industrial lots that are within view of Highway sixty-five that we probably could put them in and give them incentives to do it, if we had, down, thirty years down the road. You know, so there's, there's ways to do things. And it's not like we're throwing, throwing a blanket ordinance out there and saying we don't like you. It's just saying we want the look of our city and the tax value of our city to look a little bit differently than the way it was designed thirty years ago, or twenty years ago, or twenty-five years ago.
I wasn't in favor of that whole order thing either, Paul. But as I understand things further down, and I understand it and I look at it differently now, is you're trying to put a standards on a building that is the eyepiece of the city coming in here. It's a high-dollar tax revenue area, in which you want to get as much taxes as you can.
I get that.
So, I wasn't in favor of a deal for us.
I'm mostly arguing for the funeral home, because it says, is the purpose of this district to enhance the first impression of Iscany through the development corridor that is inviting, visually appealing, a place that community members want to visit and passersby want to stop. Who doesn't want to go there?
Wait.
They have the best-looking business in there.
Yeah, but you, you don't want to visit it.
But I'm telling you, Morty, you don't want to visit it. Outside of McDonald's and maybe soon the hotel, nobody stops more as visitors than Strike Funeral Home.
Correct, it's a beautiful funeral, you never know what's.
Well, I mean, I get the reasons why people stop there, but-
Designed to get in there.
But whatever, yeah. I'm just saying, I'm just saying Strike Funeral Home is not a rundown location, they, they do a very good job with that, looks very nice.
I would agree.
I would agree, but I, and I, and I think with Councilman Lawrence, what he's saying is actually Strikes should be thankful that we don't have any other word of funeral home in there, because it's helping them. It's driving away the competition. You get a lot of these, you know, you get a lot, you drive down Central Avenue down in Minneapolis, that whole, that whole thing is nothing but five-hundred.
There's got to be six or seven of them.
And there's, and there's probably eight of them that are owned by the same people, or big conglomerates that are moving around. So I, I think personally, that should be a good thing for him to have that clause in.
I think we were, we were both a little confused in the same area, Councilman Burgley. I, I agree. So thank you for that, any, any other questions down there, sir? All right, moving on, we're going to move to G four, the Resolution for Twenty-Nineteen Policy for Police Officer Presence at Meetings. As we spoke in, committee as a whole, I think we all agreed that we wanted this police officer present at every public meeting minus the park board, is that correct?
I agree.
I think we agree to that.
It's one motion that we do.
I make a motion that we accept that.
Yeah, without the park board.
So I have a motion from Councilman Lundeen to make it police presence at every meeting minus park and rec, this way. And a second by- And a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Resolution carries, five oh. J five, resolution on the 2019 improvement employee demotion. I'm sure we're all aware of who this is in regards to. And upon further review, given the findings in the investigation, I personally do not believe that the position of police officer is an appropriate position for this individual. We do not have any positions within the police department that would be appropriate. The findings of the investigation include status as Brady Giglio and improper release of evidence contrary to the B C H directive. Therefore, I would make a motion to rescind the prior council action taken on March fifth, special city council meeting to discipline by demotion.
Second.
And I have a second from Councilman Burgley, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Nate, I have a question regarding this. I would receive a phone call before this meeting by Councilman Josie Wood that stated if we were to do this and do anything other than a demotion, we would be setting ourselves up.
Okay, we're all aware of that, and this is not open for discussion, so.
Josie, speak to that, please.
No, there will be no discussion on this. It has been discussed in length. I will close the discussion on this item.
That's all I was told.
It carries four to one.
Given no other information, so there has not been any further discussion.
With that being said, I myself would make a motion to give a thirty-day notice with intent to terminate.
Second.
And I have a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
And I'd like to have some discussion before we go.
All opposed, same sign.
Nate, Clark, can we have some discussion?
It's up to the council, the presiding officer going to determine that issue unless the council wishes to take the vote regarding that.
Again, I, I feel that we've discussed this in length. We're going circles, just like we were with Mr. Heeman. I, I do think it's been discussed in length. I myself am closing discussion on this item.
We're treating two employees unfairly and we're opening ourselves up for a lawsuit.
We're opening ourselves up for lawsuits no matter which direction we go. So you, you keep going. And I'll find you on a order. Are we done now, sir? Nobody wants to continue the talks on that, we're going to move forward. City Administrator Ms. Wood, resolution approving a special event permit application for 2019 Minnesota State Series qualification race.
Excuse me, mayor, if you could call the vote for the last.
Four to one.
I voted against.
Thank you. Right, mayor and council, we have a special event permit from Rome River B M X for a 2019 Minnesota State Series qualifier race. This is an annual race that they have had, and it's been greatly attended and been a really great event for the community as well as for Rome River B M X. They have submitted all the proper application, documentation, cleanup fee, and staff is recommending approval of this special event.
I make a motion to accept.
I have a motion to accept from Councilman Lundin and a second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, five oh. Resolution for 2019 approving fence installation and amenities for the city dog park.
Mayor and council, staff has solicited quotes for the fence installation from three vendors. Those are presented to you in the memo and attached resolution. And this is per the direction of council when they adopted a park, dog park plan earlier this year. And staff is recommending approval for town and country fence, install the fence and other amenities for the city dog park as allocated and approved and within the 2019 budget.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Councilman Lundin and a second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, five oh. Approving the consent agenda.
Motion, second.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Councilman Lundin and a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, five oh.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Burgley.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We stand adjourned.